Yeah.
Is your mic on?
I would like to call the Peoria Public Schools Board meeting for May 13, 2013 to order. Would you please call the roll?
Ms. Patel?
Here.
This is Ross.
Here.
Mr. Floyd.
Here.
This is Wolfmeyer.
Here.
This is Costin.
Here.
This is Butler.
Here.
Mr. Crawford. Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a note about the agenda. We will be moving awards and recognition of Peoria's finest teacher to a place in the agenda after the superintendent's response to comments to account for our -- the teacher who's going to be here tonight introducing our winner is right a little late. So that takes us directly to announcements. Any board members have any announcements? I would just add that the flyers now have been distributed for this summer's arts and education programs down at the courthouse. As a person who works downtown, I always enjoy these and I would encourage all of you to attend to see our fine District 150 students display their talents and entertain you during the lunch hour. Any other announcements?
Yes, last week at the State of the Schools address, everyone had an assignment. And so at this time, it's fitting on the announcements for board members to share with the audience who they were sending their thank you cards to. Ms. Patel and Ms. Costin, you were absent from class, so you'll have to get with me to get your makeup assignment. So we'll start with Reverend Butler, if you want to share with us who you're sending your thank you card to.
Sure. To Mr. Robert Carruthers, also known as Mr. C., my grade school principal, who's been a lifetime friend. And then the next card goes to Don Baker, who's retired from the district but still assisting in youth programs and education and tutoring. He and his wife both Aetna. And so those two have been very influential, not only in my high school career but in my profession. So again, Mr. Robert Carruthers and Mr. Don Baker.
Well, I'm not an overachiever. I was only given one card, so that's all I did. My card went to Coach Jason Korsha-Grosha, Coach Q at Peoria High, the wrestling coach. He was also the wrestling coach at Woodruff when my son was there. He is just a good example of our coaches and teachers who have such an impact on our students' lives. And my son, especially the youngest one, is who he is today a lot because of the coaches he had and especially Coach Q. And I wanted him, just wanted to remind him the impact that he has on the young men's lives that he touches every year. So that's who mine's going to.
I'm going to be sending my cards to Mrs. Bales and Rod Butler. Of course, Coach Butler was very influential in my high school career, played for him, really enjoyed my Richwoods football experience. And he also taught me many life lessons, both on and off the football field. And I'm pretty good friends with his daughter as well, so I've come to develop a friendship with him even after graduation, so check up with him when I can. And then, of course, Mrs. Bales was my U.S. history and American government teacher. She took a lot of my debate in class, a lot of good lively discussions. And one of my most memorable trips in high school was when she would regularly take classes over to D.C. for a high school experience and certainly was very influential in my life and a great teacher.
My microphone is on. My card will go to Barbara Callahan Riley, who was my first grade teacher at Heinz Grade School. And it so happens that her daughter ended up working in my work group at Caterpillar years later, I was to find out. And it's just interesting to see how a generation passes along their skills and abilities.
My card went to my mother, who was the reason I'm here today and the best teacher that I've ever had and is the reason I am who I am today.
And I'd just like to add that I sent one to someone who influenced my children because I'm old as dirt and I don't think any of my teachers are probably still alive.
I would thank Lynn Cohn, my second grade teacher, who I think still lives in Skokie, who when I would finish my assignments early, instead of letting me dork around, kept shoving books in my hands over and over and over and would not let me get away with slacking off. And Hillary Rosenthal, who was my freshman world civ teacher, and inspired me to continue on with that.
Thank you. It was a good idea. And I think you've received a positive response from other members that attended.
Yes.
So therefore, it's not an announcement, but it is a thank you to the Chamber of Commerce. Some of them are here for being instrumental in us having the State of the Schools address annually now, so thank you for that.
Yes, thank you. Any other announcements? That'll take us to approval of our minutes from our last meeting of April 22, 2013. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
Ms. Patel?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Floyd?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Costin?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Obstain. We -- go ahead.
I just want to abstain, motion carried.
We have now come to the place on our agenda where members of the public may address the school board on any topic. Please come to the podium and give your name for the benefits of our -- the benefit --
...incipated in the process without violating confidentiality just a couple of weeks ago. So we've been very involved and talked you through the process and you have also had communication from the manual staff. So there have been return conversations and a discussion around the process. You might not agree with the consequence, but there have been many discussions. And so we'll leave it at that. Thank you.
But nothing has changed. Nothing has been done to prevent it.
Ms. Tell?
I just wanted to, at the next board meeting, I think, Mrs. Butler and I hope to present the revised bullying policy, which will address many points that you brought up. It uses some of the language you quoted from the Department of Ed, the severe and pervasive. It will specifically address victims of bullying and when they retaliate, what the consequences for that are. We hope to direct the administration to create a bullying form so simple that an eight-year-old could fill it out by himself.
We have one now.
And widely publicize the bullying policy on all of our channels and provide a clear description of bullying victims' rights so that parents and students will know how to go through those channels, hopefully before it turns into a big issue. So we're really looking forward to you bringing that forward. And it's been a lot of work with a lot of our parents and teachers this year, and hopefully that will address some of the larger, more systemic issues that you've been facing in this specific situation.
Any other comments? Okay, that takes us to awards and recognition. Ms. Myers?
Good evening again. Peoria's Finest Teacher is a monthly recognition that we are sponsoring for those members of PFT that go above and beyond, exemplify best practices in teaching, and will reach out to the community and parents to be involved in our schools. The teachers in this district work so hard to serve the children and families of Peoria each day, and we want to showcase this positive effort. We want to thank our winner's principal, Cindy Clark, and any faculty, friends, and family that are here in support of our winner. Our nominator of this month's winner is Tom Hayes, if you'll come up, Tom. And this month's Peoria's Finest Teacher is Carolyn Farkesh at Richwoods High School. Come on up, Carolyn. Congratulations.
Okay, thank you. First, I'd like to apologize. I had a prior commitment. I could not be here, and I know Ms. Clark has other places to be, as I'm sure the family does. So thank you for accommodating my request. And then also thank you to the district and the union for doing this. It's very important for teachers to be recognized and to feel that they, you know, are doing something positive, especially by your peers. And for me, this is a very easy one. I, you know, I've had the pleasure of working with Carolyn for several years. I actually met her probably about five or six years ago through a Caterpillar Street Law program. And I remember my first thoughts were, that's a very pleasant lady. I really enjoyed talking with her. And in the past couple of years, I've got to work with her at Richwoods High School. And, you know, some of the reasons why I believe she deserves this award, the bottom line for teachers is she cares about kids. And it's very apparent from watching her work with kids, from knowing her students and listening to students talk about her. And it's also no coincidence that she was just named one of our Scholar Athletes. Tyler Brown was his favorite teacher. And if you think about a high school kid, has about 30 teachers throughout their career. He was just in the newspaper for being a student athlete. And, you know, there's 30-some teachers, and Ms. Farkesh was listed as his favorite. And that's not a coincidence. She has a very positive attitude, very smart and funny. And, you know, again, I think when you get towards retirement, you know, sometimes you say, well, this person's ready. And, you know, good for them. I don't really feel that way with her. I think she could easily do another 10 years. Not that she'd maybe want to, but there's going to be a big hole in our faculty. And that's really the bottom line. There's going to be a big hole without her. She's just very pleasant to work with and does a great job with the kids. And also say, there's not many people in this district who can claim they've taken kids to Washington, D.C. multiple times. I mean, she's done this several times, senior class sponsor. She does a lot of the little things that I just think make her a great teacher. And on a personal note, she's been a very good friend to me, helped me out when I needed it a lot, and I'm really going to miss her. So I'm proud to nominate her for this award.
All right. Oh, boy. Wow. All right. Well, I had to write this down so I wouldn't mess up. I want to thank, oh, boy. I want to thank all of you who I work with. The staff is just fabulous, and I've had the pleasure to work with magnificent teachers. And I especially want to thank our union, Mr. Hayes, and my family, my husband Sandy and my family over there, part of my family over there. They've always given me great support, and I've appreciated all the ways that they help me continue to do my job through their support and their encouragement. Over the years, like I said, I've been able to teach with a lot of great people, and I really never thought I would be one of those who'd get anything like this. And I have to tell you, at the very beginning, I kind of thought it was maybe a joke. I just wasn't ready for anything like that. But I do appreciate all of that and all the kind things that Mr. Hayes has said. And I'd just like to thank him very, very much. He is a good friend. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Hayes and Ms. Farkesh. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. That will take us now to Dr. Lathan. I believe we're at Remarkable Rule Number Two.
Yes, Ms. Copeland and Ms. Lindholm, if you would come up, please, in reference to No Child Left Behind, our choice program.
We're here to talk about choice tonight, myself and Ms. Lindholm. As you might remember, last year, it was, we weren't quite to the start of this. It went right up to the
Yes, Ms. Copeland and Ms. Lindholm, if you would come up, please, in reference to No Child Left Behind, our choice program.
We're here to talk about choice tonight, myself and Ms. Lindholm. As you might remember, last year, it was, we weren't quite to the start of this. It went right up to the beginning of the school year as we waited for a waiver that we thought was going to come from the state. And so, we're waiting on news from that. This year, we were able to get back to the regular timeline for choice. So, real quick, what is choice? It's a three-phase process in District 150 that includes three pieces: No Child Left Behind, as mandated by the federal law, NCLB, district choice, and boundary waivers. The timeline this year, we rolled it out on May 3rd. We send a mailing out with NCLB letters and the application for the NCLB form. So, schools that received that, received a yellow form in the mail. I should say, the families at those schools. And those went out in mail on May 3rd. Information was also posted to our website and included in Remarkable Times about all three processes. And the window for application opened on Monday, May 6th. It will end on June 7th at 5:00 p.m. And there are two different applications. One is the yellow form that those families at NCLB schools receive in the mail. Another one is available on our website for district choice and boundary waivers. And so, on both those applications, families have three schools to choose from. So, I'm going to let Ms. Lindholm talk about No Child Left Behind.
As you know, No Child Left Behind, the choice option is a requirement. We budget 20% of our Title I budget for choice and SES. And as a requirement, it is for the schools that are in federal improvement status. And as Chris mentioned, the letters are mailed, and parents are given at least 30 days to respond. Transportation for No Child Left Behind choice is funded through our Title I funds. And the selections are made based on student achievement. The receiving schools, as of now, are Calvin Coolidge, Lindbergh, Charter Oak, Hines, Keller, and Northmar. But you see, two are noted pending AYP results from this year. So, the parents of these students from these schools received the letter with the yellow Now, we'll go to the next slide. As you noticed, there were no high schools that are on the receiving end, because none of our high schools have made AYP. So, what's mandated by the, by No Child Left Behind, is that we send letters to outlying school districts to ask if they would receive students. But as you know from the news, they haven't made AYP either, or they've decided, or they have responded saying no, that they would not be interested in that agreement. And in your packets, you have copies of the letter that I mailed out to the outlying districts, and you have copies of the responses from those districts. Chris will continue with the district choice, and we'll take questions at the end.
I think an important point to add to NCLB choice is that to receive students, those schools have to make AYP one of the last two years. In addition, for district choice is the second piece of the process. And with that, we have opt-in and opt-out, basically consisting of our three former Edison Schools, Magnet, Roosevelt Magnet School, and Manuel Seventh and Eighth Grade Academy. Those five are choices because of their different programs that they offer and longer school day. Applications are granted when space in a grade level at a chosen school is available. So, as a parent, if I want my child to go to another school, and my child's a third-grader, space has to be available in that classroom, in the third-grade classroom at my desired school in order for a placement to be made. It is not guaranteed. Discipline and attendance history are reviewed prior to placement and for each consecutive year, and transportation is provided. With district choice, it is a reoccurring placement, provided that discipline and attendance are okay as we go through that review. And so, that could be granted clear-up through the highest-grade level of that building. For boundary waivers, the difference is it's basically any school to any school within the district. Again, the same things are looked at: discipline and attendance, the space available in the desired classroom in the school. It's not a guaranteed placement. There is no transportation provided for boundary waivers. And again, just like NCLB choice, we are not offering boundary waivers at the high school level because of the enrollments, projected enrollments at each school. To finish this process, once the application window closes in June, we will begin reviewing those applications by June 10th. We'll go in that order. NCLB applications will be considered first, followed by district choice, and then boundary waivers. Student achievement is the priority for NCLB choice, and siblings are sent together whenever possible. We do guarantee that all placements will be made by August 1st this year. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those at this time.
Address the student achievement piece, because people think it's an automatic, based on those schools that you listed.
Right, right. As a requirement of the law, the students who are probably going to fail or may fail are given higher priority. So, we base our, we create a spreadsheet which has NWEA scores, ISAT scores, and grades. And then, we have a formula. They're given a ranking, and those students with the highest score are placed first.
I guess for any of these, but especially the NCLB, if a child is at a school other than their home school because of being granted an NCLB choice school, do they have to reapply every year?
No, they don't. They are allowed to remain at that school until the highest grade. So, if they enter a middle school at fifth grade on NCLB choice, they do not have to reapply. We contact the parents every year to ask if they wish to remain, and then they can continue up to eighth grade or the highest grade in that building.
What about the other ones? Do they have to, like for boundary waivers, if they've had a boundary waiver, do they have to apply every year?
District choice is rolled over automatically, provided attendance and discipline are okay after that review. Boundary waivers, we do ask them to reapply every year. However, this year, to make the process run faster, we are rolling those over, provided no attendance or discipline.
Mr. Cloyde?
Yes, just in those three categories this year, can you give me some approximate number of cases or students involved in each of those three categories?
I can tell you, last year, we had, I believe, 300 to 400 applications for boundary waivers and district choice. And I don't have the NCLB numbers.
I don't have those with me. I can get those to you.
It'd be interesting to know that. Obviously, there's a large number of applications to deal with there, so. Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, that brings us to, I believe, to Dr. Lathan. It's Dr. Kenny's turn, I believe. Yeah, we can, let's move on to purchase orders over 2,500. Any questions for Dr. Kenny? Okay.
Okay, I wanted to take just a few minutes and talk about the amended budget, so that we can get this ready for display tomorrow and so forth. Before I do get started, I just wanted to take just a minute and tell Dr. Lathan, thank you for her presentation, talking about a bare-bones budget last week at the breakfast. And I just, I do remember that she said something about, use your imagination about a bare-bones budget. I didn't want her to have to use her imagination. So, to help her out, we do have a picture here. So, I either wanted to be a good employer, I'm getting even one or the other, so. All right, timeline. So, tonight, we're talking about it. Tomorrow, in the Journal Star, there will be a legal notice published, and the budget will be on display first thing in the morning. Chris has it put on our website as well. So, if people want to look at it on the website, they are more than welcome to do that. Monday, June 17th, we'll actually have a budget hearing as part of the board meeting, and there will be a resolution to accept this amended budget, and immediately, we'll file it with the ROE. Okay, so, what are we talking about? And I know numbers are small. We have given the media a copy of this. I started to kind of put things in shade, colors, and so forth, and there's so many of those, it just looked like a big polka-dotted mess. So, we'll go right down the Ed Fund column, that first column of numbers. Property taxes are down a little bit, and you'll see that. I'm going to go into more specifics in just a minute, but I just wanted to point some things out. Federal sources is up a little bit. The reason they're up is because we've had carryover from grants and so forth that have helped that out. Other, you'll see that number, 8.5 million, basically, that's up some, and we'll explain why in a minute. Down to the expenditures, benefits are way down, and that's very helpful to us. We'll explain why. Purchase services, supplies, materials, capital outlay, they're all up some. But bottom line, we've cut some, we've increased the, we decreased the deficit in the education fund. O and M, the biggest thing is salaries. I'll show that in a second. Transportation is our biggest troubled area, and that's because we have a whole lot more expenditures and a whole lot less revenue that we're dealing with. So, we'll look at the next slide here. Property taxes, basically, we had budgeted about a 1.5% decline in EAV, and it came out to be a little bit worse than that. So, if you were to look across all funds, you would see about a $250,000 decrease. Benefits did reduce. This is because our insurance committee was able to negotiate a 0% increase in healthcare costs for all of 2013. So, that takes care for semester next year as well. They're working very hard now to look at a different way to do healthcare insurance, and I think that will bode well for us for the future. If I go back, you can see just barely on the bottom, kind of a shaded light blue, those numbers, those are the revenues over or under expenditures. Those, and then down below that, probably the audience can't see it, they're cumulative fund balances. Those have all been changed based on the audit that we had in November. One of the things, while I'm at this screen, you'll see in the Ed Fund and O and M, there's combined about 1.4 million. That was almost 4.5 million as a deficit last August. And obviously, we've refined our expenditures and our revenues, which we obviously have the ability to do at this time of the year. Okay, in the Ed Fund, we added about a million and a half in additional revenues based on the bond closeouts of Lincoln. That was a big help to us. In the replacement taxes, I'm going to go back to that just real quickly. That's that second line under Ed. You see about 7.8 million and O and M, 1.7. In the past, we've always budgeted about 2.3 or 2.4 million in the O and M for revenue coming from replacement taxes. This year, if you recall, at the very last minute, we got word from the state that they were going to keep 15% of those revenues away from us. So, in the initial budget, we were very nervous about giving any money from replacement taxes in O and M. Since then, and because of other revenues that we've seen for our amended budget, we are shifting. So, the replacement tax number in total didn't change. We just shifted some of it over to O and M to help with that particular fund. Okay. In the, we also added, I said, about 700,000 in federal revenues based on carryover. Expenditures, the total number of expenditures went down by about $740,000. The reason for that is, again, I think we overbudgeted the benefits in the first place. But with the healthcare costs staying where they're at, that was a significant help, and we're able to kind of move that 2.5 million around in this amended budget. It's what the process is for. But additional expenditures we did raise, we raised purchase services about 1 million, supplies and materials about 360,000, capital outlay about 300,000. A lot of that is partly due to some of the federal programs, as we knew that we had more money, we needed to spend those down. But bottom line, from that original budget deficit of almost 2.3 million, or whatever it was, in the Ed Fund that we projected last August, we've reduced that deficit by about 1.7 million. Operations and maintenance, I said that went up. Expenditures went up about 270,000, and most of it is in salaries. What we will do before June 30th is over, some of those expenditures, we will do journal entries and move them to health, life, safety. And the reason for that's where we've been doing the work. We haven't sold bonds to do health, life, safety work, so we do have that ability. And so, some of that deficit there will be moved into health, life, safety, where we're not spending as much money right now. Transportation expenses went up about 800,000. Now, you're aware that we have ordered, we knew we would do this, we knew we would amend the budget, to buy some used buses and buy some of the white activity buses. So, we've done that. Another obvious increase is fuel has just skyrocketed on us, and we're taking steps to deal with that for next year. Certainly, our purchase services did go up a little bit. That's for student, and we know that. But the biggest thing is that we lost about 550,000 in revenues. All right, IMRF, that's our retirement fund for our non-certified employees. That rate went up considerably from last year to this year, and it's going up again for next year. So, we underbudgeted expenses there by about 225,000. But the whole total operational side, that left-hand side of the budget, we're looking at a deficit that has shrunk by about 1.4 million, and that's good for us, I think probably still on the conservative side. Now, this is that right-hand side of the budget, and not a lot of change there, but I did want to point out, in that first column of numbers, that's the debt service. Under other objects, that number is $750,000 bigger. You may ask why? Well, that's that money that we are using out of debt service, that we put there last year when we got the CDB grant. That's what we're using to abate taxes. And I should explain, we talked about using 1.5 million, and that's what we will ultimately do. But what will happen is, that first 1.5 million that we abated, half of it will come out of second semester this year. The other half will come out of first semester next year. Then, next December, at the tax levy hearing, we'll abate another million and a half, so the second semester of next year will be out of that money. That's just the way the budget works. So, I just wanted to point that out. And you can't see, and it's probably too bad, because it really is important, if you go to that far right-hand column, you'll see that the deficit is just right at about 3 million. So, we're about a million better off than we were, or what we thought we were in August. And that's in spite of, you know, the other things we've done, including the tax abatement. What you can't see in the green, at least the audience can't see, down below that, two numbers, that's our overall fund balance that's sitting at about 48 million. That's what we're projecting by the end of the year. And as I said, I tend to be a bit conservative, so I'm hopeful, as we go through the audit process in the fall, that that'll actually end up just slightly better. What happens is, there are a lot of accruals that are done. So, depending on what we do during June, and even July, because a lot of July expenses will be accrued back to this fiscal year. And also, not knowing what the governor's going to do for transportation revenue, that could have a big hand in how this looks, because we actually accrue next year's revenue from transportation back into this year, because that's when that revenue was earned, was during this year. So, depending on what the governor does there, not sure what we can really predict for next fall. But that does show that we're looking at about $48 million in our checking account at the end of the fiscal year. And I need to point out, that's not including capital projects, and it's not including debt service. We've kind of talked about, those are dedicated funds, especially debt service between the tax abatements and bonds. tax abatements and bonds that we pay. We pretend there's kind of a zero balance there, capital projects. The number is sitting at about, not quite 20 million that we're projecting at the end of the year, but we've got all our projects lined up, and then a whole bunch past that. So, I just wanted to give you those pictures. Now, I've added a couple of slides, whoops, I'm sorry. Let me go back. Go ahead.
Just a question, could you go back one to that?
Okay.
Could you just describe briefly the $15 million in on behalf payments and what that represents?
Sure. Bottom line, the state tells us to put into our budgets an amount that represents what their costs are for TRS payments. That, you know, when we talk about the shift in pension funding, that is their share of the pension funds that need to be going into the system. Now, when you also hear them talk about shifting those, it won't be the whole 15 million. There's a certain amount that they still owe from the past. What they're trying to do is shift future obligations. So, we think that'll probably be in the seven to eight million dollar number when, when it does happen. And I think it's when, not if, personally.
So, if we're receiving something on the order of $66 million in property tax revenues, and the state decides to shift another $7 million in TRS to us, that means we have to raise our property taxes to cover that?
We'll have to do something, yes.
If they don't allow us to do that.
Absolutely. Well, right now, you know, the word seems to be, one of the things that's been talked about is, for IMRF, we can levy what we need. I think different legislators have talked about, do we do that with TRS? If we're making the locals pay for it, are you going to give boards the ability to levy for it? And so far, they've said no. So, we're just supposed to raise it some other way.
They do that in Chicago though, don't they?
I, that I don't know.
Yeah. I believe that's the case.
Let me go back just a couple of slides real quick, so that people know what Mr. Cloyde's talking about. You see in the first column, both under revenue and expenditures, that on behalf. And it, to me, it's a, up to this point, is kind of an artificial thing, because we just put two matching numbers. When the audit comes through, it won't be exactly 15 million, it'll be around there. And it does, it does do some kind of funny things with how you read about it, but bottom line, it really doesn't, there's no real revenue or no real expenditures on our part. All right, just real quickly, debt service, there's that 750,000 I was talking about. And people do need to realize that by your vote doing that last December, it took the tax rate down about 11 cents. Okay? Capital projects, we think we'll spend about 6 million, and that's through the June 30th timeframe, obviously, with other contracts we're looking at, it'll go up. A lot of that to date has, you know, is going into our Wi-Fi and some of our technology expenditures. Tort is just a little bit higher, but I think by the end of, well, by audit time, I think that'll be back down.
Will you explain what is in tort?
Yes, that's risk management. So, it can be attorney's fees if we're being sued, it's our property casualty insurance that we pay, our resource officers, those are risk management type activities that we do. So, those are the kinds of things that are in there. Just a couple of other, I think, very interesting slides, and Mr. Cloyde, help me with this. This shows you a little bit of the history of our fund balances, and these are cumulative fund balances. But in 2010, when the audit was done, we were almost 7 million in the red in our Ed Fund. Next, hopefully, at the end of this fiscal year, we'll, obviously, we've turned it around significantly, and it'll be closer to about a $6 million fund balance, we hope. The next column there, operations and maintenance, we're, you know, hovering around not a big fund balance. We try to keep expenditures in line. The one that's down below, tort, obviously, we tried to deal with that sum, that's a deficit that we've had. By standards of what we're trying to do, that's not a huge situation to deal with. Next column is transportation. There's a bit of a story right there. If you'll recall, a couple of years ago, the governor talked about going through school districts. I think at that point, they were like $8 billion behind in payments, and so, they were looking at all school district funds across the state of Illinois, and people should get really angry about this, but they actually were looking at, so if we sweep every school district's fund balances, guess what? It's about 8 billion, and we can just pay off everybody's debts, it just doesn't matter that local school districts do a lot of things to protect their own fund balances and raise their own funds to protect those balances. So, what they did do, though, I think, is they discovered that in most school districts, transportation funds were generally okay, including District 150. But I, that seems to be kind of a rule, so I think that's why we keep hearing the threats of pulling that funding away. My fear is, is that a lot of districts do exactly what we did. Well, you're trying to protect those fund balances, you need the cash flow for your operations, so what a lot of districts have done is not buy buses. So, at some point, that's going to catch up with all of us, and not be a good situation. Next column is the IMRF, again, try to keep that pretty close to where we're at. Debt service, the only reason, again, that that's big is because we put the money in there for the tax abatements. And then the last column is the health and life safety funds. If you'll notice, 2010, it had this big balance of four and a half million dollars or so, and then we're back in the red. Well, the reason that happened is because during FY10, the district sold bonds to do future health, life, safety work. So, it's that situation like we're in with capital projects, the money was there until we started spending it. So, there's not the revenue source to keep that up. And then finally, the last slide, this just shows all of our funds, starting with where we're in our healthiest balances. Obviously, working cash, because we sold those bonds three or four years ago, I think we've tried to do a pretty good job of protecting that money. Even this, at the end of this fiscal year, we should have fund balances that are eight or nine million dollars over what that level is, or even 10 million. So, capital projects, obviously, fund balances, but we've talked about, and we will be spending those down. When we talked about that 48 million in fund balances, again, that's without two out of the three largest amounts of revenue that we have. So, I think, for the time being, we're doing okay. I would like to make just a couple of comments, if it's okay, bear with me for a minute. You're aware, I wear a couple of hats, working for District 150, but I'm also a school board member in Chillicothe at IVC School District. And I, just a little bit of picture going forward, it's going to be a tough year. I think if people are reading what the media is saying, what we're hearing from the governor's office, from the legislature, funds are going to be tough to come by next year. So, what we're facing here, just as I am in Chillicothe, you know, there's a lot of pride in what we've done over the last couple of years, trying to build up programs and get things going again. And it's a tough situation, as we look at, you know, a potential drop of another $3 or $4 million in state aid, and I'm talking about another, to a cumulative loss of 17 million over three years. Every school board is being faced with tough decisions, and I think it's very important to think about, at least for next year, we need to protect some of the special things we've done, and we may eat into our $48 million fund balance sum, and I would expect that that would happen. And it's the same discussion having at District 321, and oddly enough, I think Rev. Butler can comment, when we went to a regional school board meeting with about 12 districts present, all districts around are having that same discussion. What do we do for next year to try to keep things going? We don't want to destroy our programs. Having been at IVC for 36 years, I'm very proud of a lot of the things that we were able to accomplish there, and it's very tough sitting there in a board meeting and hearing about, well, do we do away with fifth and sixth grade band? Do we do away with this sports program? How do we reduce class, you know, or actually increase the teacher-student ratio? So, these discussions are going on all over, and I just think it's very important that we just do what we can to make next year work, and then hope, like heck, that the state does something to turn it around, because it's going to get tougher.
Yes, Dr. Kenny, as he was talking about that meeting and other school districts around us in the region, they had mentioned, someone thought that they may have one year left
Yep.
to do some things, and then they will have to start cutting in the personnel and all those other things that really hurts. So, the storm has already come our way, and it will continue in this region. We'll see others having to make tough decisions too.
Well, and the board's aware, we're looking at all of our expenditures now, and there are going to be some things we're not going to do next year that we have done. But we're trying to keep that kind of activity as far away from the classrooms as possible, and we're going to continue to work at that. So, any questions?
Yes.
Dr. Kenny, there's, we have state grants and replacement taxes in addition to general state aid. When we hear in the media that the state is considering cutting the amounts that they give us, are they just talking about general state aid, and can we even, God forbid, see further reduction with, oh, you're going to get fewer grants, grant money? Or, by the way, those replacement taxes, we're going to even hold more back?
Well, I, obviously, state aid is a big one. If they move, this year, we were getting 89% appropriated funds. So, if we'd have gotten 100%, we'd have had about 5 and 1/2 million more. When that goes down to 80% that they're projecting now, and you'll hear 80, or you'll hear 82, that's another 3 and 1/2 or 4 million dollar loss. So, that's state aid. State grant programs, they've gone down anyway. Many of them were funded at 70 or 80% of what they should, they were a year ago. Some of them were cut out, so we'll see that too. One that's been specifically talked about is transportation. And when we first heard about it, we heard them talking about a 20% cut, you know, and it's about 72% now. Now, when they say 72%, there's some multipliers on that, so it's really not anywhere near that. But what they're talking about now, I thought they were talking about a 20% cut. No, they're talking about funding transportation at 20%. So, that 3 and 1/2 million that we got this year would go down to 1.3 million for next year. So, that's just devastating, because one of the things, and you're aware, one of the things we've tried to do in District 150 here is, we transport a lot of kids that we don't get reimbursed for, because of neighborhood situations, because of those kinds of things, because of after-school programs. We do a lot of transporting, and we put a lot of monitors on buses that we don't get reimbursed for. So, as we move forward, you can imagine that if it's reduced to that level, our fund balances in transportation will be gone in two years, and we'll have gotten, gone to nothing without having bought buses. So, it's pretty scary. Replacement taxes, my hope is that it was a one-time deal where they took that 15%. So, we'll see. But, you know, unfortunately, as we work on the budget for next year, we aren't going to know that till mid-August, about, right about the time, literally, we were preparing the budget on Friday to put in the packets, and heard that day this past year about this 15% taken away, so.
And the replacement taxes, those are generated through the sales tax?
Through, well, through corporate, it's a corporate replacement property tax.
And it's really money that they're kind of Springfield's withholding that was generated in this community?
Yes. Well, all over the state, but yes.
Right.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kenny.
Dr. Lathan, that takes us to remarkable rule number four. Oh, my bad, that's right. Yes, yes. I'm trying to do this without referring to my documents.
Sure, do that.
Yes, Mr. Cloyde, Ms. Wolfmeyer.
At the last board meeting, as a result of a little bit of confusion about, actually, we changed the board travel policy, I think, back in the fall of 2011, and there's a little confusion. So, at the last board meeting and executive session, board members asked the policy committee to come up with a procedure to go along with the board travel policy. And as Mr. Cloyde and I met and sort of came up with that, and then sat down with the attorneys, we actually decided, rather than a detailed procedure, that it would make more sense to have an additional policy. And actually, this policy is more of a board travel approval policy, where the existing one is, deals more with reimbursement and vouchers and things like that. So, we provided one to you, I think, about a week and a half ago, that the one in the packet is a lot shorter, more concise. We sat with the attorneys last week and went through it, and they had some great suggestions for just making it much simpler, but we think this will, will give board members a good guideline on what procedures to follow when they find a trip they want to go on, and how to proceed with getting arrangements made and that kind of thing. So, tonight is just a first reading, so if you have concerns, if you have comments or questions, we can ferret those out tonight, and then bring it back at the next board meeting for final approval. I'm Mr. Cloyde, I don't know if anything else you wanted to add to that or not?
No, I think everyone received a copy of that. It does also call for the travel requests for the board to be a separate item in the Any questions for Mr. Cloyde or Ms. Wolfmeyer? Thank you. Dr. Lathan?
Since our last board meeting, report on April 8, 2013, we have received eight new Freedom of Information Act requests. Of these new requests, five were filled. There was one pending request noted on the April 8, 2013 board report. That request was filled. We've received 33 requests for this calendar year.
Mr. Crawford, if I could just add back on the travel thing for a minute, it will come up for a vote at the next meeting, but we also have an opportunity for more discussion. So, if anything occurs to board members between now and then, we can certainly discuss it again at that time.
Thank you, Ms. Wolfmeyer. Thank you, Dr. Lathan. That takes us to the items on tonight's consent agenda. Vice President Cloyde.
Thank you, Mr. President. Items on the consent agenda. Item number one, gifts to the school district. Total for this meeting, $20,283.50. Year-to-date, $128,077.07. Proposed action is that the Board of Education accept the following donations and letters of appreciation be sent to the donors. A number of items, including musical instruments donated by Margaret Periam, David Frisell, and also books valued at $68 by Richard Albers. Also, donations totaling $17,615 for the District 150 Golf Foundation, Foundation Golf Outing, which is to be held in June, and that was from a number of individuals and organizations. Item number two, payment of bills. Item number three, the Human Resources report, the proposed action is the appointment, employment, compensation, performance, resignation, retirement, or discharge of an employee. Item number four, travel requests. Item number five, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Central College to work together to provide programming and learning experiences for District 150 students. Proposed action is that the Board of Education approve an intergovernmental agreement with Illinois Central College that will establish an educational relationship that is comprehensive, structured, and underscored by a mutual commitment to create ongoing academic and career opportunities to educate students, parents, and or guardians for seamless transition from middle school through high school to Illinois Central College. Item number six, Peoria Federation of Teachers, IFT, AFT, FHL, CIO contract extension. Proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the teachers' contract extension as presented. Item number seven, Bradley University contract. Proposed action is that the Board of Education approve contracts with Bradley University to host a staff event on Thursday, August 15, 2013, as well as high school graduation events on Saturday, May 31, 2014, at the Renaissance Coliseum, at a combined cost of $6,000 plus operational costs estimated $8,877.50. Item number eight, conversion of Jamison School and Lindbergh Middle School from a targeted assistance Title I school to a school-wide Title I school. Proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the Title I school-wide plans prepared and submitted by Jamison School and Lindbergh Middle School. Item number nine, school-wide plans of Charter Oak Primary, Franklin Primary, Glen Oak Community Learning Center, Harrison Community Learning Center, Heinz Primary, Keller Primary, Lincoln, Northmore Primary, Roosevelt, Thomas Jefferson, Treewind, Valeska Hinton, Whittier Primary, Woodrow Wilson Primary, Calvin Coolidge Middle, Mark Bills Middle, Rolling Acres Middle, Sterling Middle, Von Steuben Middle, Manual Academy, and Peoria High. Proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the Title I school-wide plans prepared and submitted by Charter Oak Primary, Franklin Primary, Glen Oak Community Learning Center, Harrison Community Learning Center, Heinz Primary, Keller Primary, Lincoln, Northmore Primary, Roosevelt, Thomas Jefferson, Treewind, Valeska Hinton, Whittier Primary, Woodrow Wilson Primary, Calvin Coolidge Middle, Mark Bills Middle, Sterling Middle, Von Steuben Middle, Manual Academy, and Peoria High. And number 10, adoption of license agreement. Proposed action is that the Board of Education approve a one-year license agreement with Cannon Elite Inc. for use of the Elite program information in conjunction with the Elite program at Treewind School and Harrison School at a cost of $60,000. Item number 11, extension of food service contract. Proposed action is that the Sadexo Food Service Management Contract be extended one additional year for the 2014, I'm sorry, FY14 school year. The Illinois State Board of Education determines the percent that the food service contract can increase based on an index, which is the Consumer Price Index, CPIU, food away from home. The annual rate for December 2012 is 2.5%. The annual rate for December 2012 is 2.5%. Number 12, a letter of agreement with the Great Plains Orthopedics. Proposed action that the Board of Education of Peoria Public School District 150 extend an agreement with Great Plains Orthopedics to provide athletic training, service, and event coverage for all three Peoria Public High Schools. Costs will be at the same as last year, with the exception of mileage when necessary. Number 13, approve low bidder for construction of the new air conditioning at Keller Primary School. Proposed action is that the Board of Education is asked to approve the low bid for the addition of air conditioning and heating upgrades at Keller. Bids were opened Thursday, May 9, 2013. There were three bidders, and we are recommending the low bidder, commercial mechanic with a low bid of $545,000. One alternate bid was included for a separate new control system that puts Keller Heating on the district's standard networked HVAC controls. Number 14, approve low bidder for construction of the new gym addition at Calvin Coolidge. Proposed action is that the Board of Education is asked to approve the low bid for construction of the new gym at Calvin Coolidge Middle School. Gym will include about 10,000 square feet of new construction and about 960 square feet of renovation. Bids were open Friday, May 10, 2013. There were six bidders, and we are recommending the low bidder, Peoria Metro Construction, with a low bid of $1,859,000 plus $36,000 for the alternate. The alternate bid shown in the pricing is to use brick instead of split-faced brick. Please note, Peoria Metro will be discounting the price because they are the low bidder on the Rolling Acres construction as well, and they offered a combined reduction of $27,000 for getting both contracts. Item number 15, approve low bidder for construction of the new cafeteria at Rolling Acres. Proposed action, the Board of Education is asked to approve the low bid for the construction of a new 4,800-square-foot cafeteria multipurpose room at Rolling Acres. Bids were open Friday, May 10, 2013. There were six bidders, and we are recommending the low bidder, Peoria Metro Construction, with a low base bid of $1,125,500. Our recommendation includes the following alternates: blick, I'm sorry, brick instead of split-faced brick, I'm sorry, split-faced block, $52,800. Installation of basketball backboard associated striping and power supports, $10,480. Installation of acoustical panels, $4,260. Installation of window shades, $15,200. Please note, Peoria Metro will be discounting the price because they are the low bidder on the Calvin Coolidge construction as well, and they offered a combined reduction of $27,000 for getting both contracts. Number 16, onward healthcare supplemental staffing agreement. Proposed action, did the administration be authorized to enter into a supplemental staffing agreement with onward healthcare to assist with the completion of projected overdue reevaluation, evaluations for students with disabilities and requests for additional evaluation, for an initial evaluation, excuse me. The agreement will allow for the district to partner with a school psychologist candidate from onward healthcare to assist with completion of reevaluations. Proposed amount requested for approval will be approximately $21,000 for the end, for the end of this school year through June 30, 2013. The hourly rate charge will be a maximum cost of $95 per hour. The agreement would be in effect for one year, allowing the district to have assistance next school year as well if needed. The anticipated expenditure requested for authorization will not exceed $50,000 unless approved by the Board of Education. The expenditure is going to be funded through the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act pending, pending amendment approval. And that completes it, and I would have a question about number 16.
Glad to get a drink of water first.
No, it was a, it was a stretch.
Okay. First, we'll ask for a motion, and a second to, or strike that. Would anybody, like any of the items on tonight's consent agenda, pull for a separate vote? Ms. Kostic?
I'd like further clarification on item 16. Will we have a separate vote?
Okay. We will pull 16 for a separate vote. Are there any other items that people, anyone, any board member would like to pull for a separate vote? May I have a motion and a second to approve the items on tonight's consent agenda excluding item 16?
So moved.
Is there any discussion on items 1 through 15? Yeah. Let's, let's, let's take Dr. Lathan first.
Okay. First, I'd like to begin with the agreement with ICC. And we actually have representatives here tonight. We're excited about our intergovernmental agreement that we're entering into with ICC. And as stated earlier, we're starting with our sixth-grade students and introducing them to ICC all the way up to 12th grade. Someone did ask me earlier, well, does this mean that you're just pushing all students to ICC? No, we're just making sure every child in our district understands that they have an option, whether it's to ICC, to a four-year university, or out to the world of work. And so we're excited tonight that Dr. Irwin is here, and we'd like for you to come up, please, and share words with us. We also have Sherry McGill with us from Peoria Promise, who's also here tonight. And we know that Peoria Promise offers an opportunity for our students to go on to ICC. So I'd like for actually both of you to bring comments tonight about what this intergovernmental agreement means to ICC and also to Peoria Promise. And I know, Dr. Irwin, you have some other people you want to recognize?
Yes, sir.
Okay?
I apologize. I didn't know I was going to be speaking tonight. We do actually currently have an agreement with you as well. We are allowed to come into the schools and speak to grade school, junior high school, and high school students as well. We believe strongly that there are opportunities for all students to seek education beyond high school years, and how important that is to continue to do that. ICC offers a plethora of educational outlets where you get a certificate, or you can do your entry-level work, or you can go into, get your transfer degree. So we're excited to be able to go into the schools and help spread that message and get kids excited about learning. I was just at Sterling Middle School two weeks ago. They're very fun and interactive and ready to listen to opportunities and discover how they can go on. Sometimes you're not really even talked to in the home about opportunities in education, so it's an honor to be able to be allowed to come in and talk to them about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have several thank yous. First of all, Dr. Lathan, thank you, and Dr. Kenny for the support you gave for our agreement, and all the conversations we've had leading up to this. And to the Board of Education, we appreciate the partnership. Obviously, we're a better community, a stronger community, when the community college and the local public school can really be in concert when it comes to student success and student learning. We have a special partnership with business community, and I think with Tom Flegge and Roberta Parks representing the Chamber of Commerce, you can see that the business communities behind the partnership that we're exhibiting through these activities. And last, I want to thank Chair James Polk, he's vice chair this year of the Board of Trustees at ICC. James, thank you for being here. And Dr. Swanson, a special thank you as vice president of Academic Affairs, who really kind of walked, ushered this agreement through. Through this coming year, we'll be meeting quarterly as a strategic team, and then we'll have an annual report. And I hope what you'll take from that is accountability. And we'll be able to come back here in a year, and we'll show some measurables from the success of this partnership and the variety of programs. And we're interested in improving the MOU. So I hope next year, we have additional programs that we can add. And I also hope you'll take some light from the fact that we went down into sixth grade and really see that those career choices for young people really need to start earlier and create the excitement that can be there through then middle school and ultimately their high school. And yes, we hope they choose ICC, but we know there are other choices out there, too. Ultimately, the student wins, and we hope, again, to be that good community partner. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you again for coming. I'm going to keep going through the agenda items and, but in regards to, so what does that look like in terms of, like someone from Peoria Promise or ICC going into the classroom to talk with the students? Kind of what is, how is that related, a topic or an assignment or exercise or?
Currently, we have been going to the schools and doing a PowerPoint presentation, or there's been some exercises where the kids are given a career choice and basically a pot of money. And we have six students line up, and we say, this is the career choice that you've selected. And then we go through with them what it would cost to pay for your rent, what it would cost to pay for food for the week, all of those different expenses that they don't know about. So it gives them an idea of what earning potential they have by getting an education, and where they're going to have money left to do things that they want to do. The best way to talk to young kids is tell them, you know, what they can buy. So beyond paying for their bills and making a living, we are letting them know that there are other reasons why they should continue their education, and that we're going to be there to fund that for them. At the high school level, we began a mentor program last year. It's my intention to grow and develop that. Far more than paying for college, I think it's greatly important that we have a mechanism in place to ensure completion. We can have hundreds or thousands of kids go and dabble in college and higher education, but completion is really what's going to bring our kids into an earning income level where they can maintain their household and be able to spend their dollars in our community. By going to ICC, not only are we keeping our students local, but they're, the students who are working in our local businesses, and they're spending their own dollars in their local businesses, so to keep that going. We encourage the kids to look into some of the local businesses that we have currently, and if they have questions about how to seek jobs or educational funding for beyond ICC, I hope to grow this program so that we can be there, not only for their interim between high school and college, but also well beyond that.
Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Irwin, would you mention the, discuss the Emerging Leaders Program? Or, Dr. Swanson, one of you want to talk about that? How that looks in our district through our partnership?
Well, the Emerging Leaders Program is a grant that we have at the college, and we have three or four new, four new full-time members that will be able to come into the high school and work with the college, or, excuse me, the high school students as they prepare, prepare for college readiness. So again, this whole premise is college and career readiness, and I like to think of it in that topic. It would be great if they did come to Illinois Central College, but we want them to go where they want to go and have the tools to be successful in those endeavors. So we have a variety of things that are addressed in a spreadsheet here that we'll be working with the school district, coming into the classrooms, maybe taking some of the students to ICC, and doing some exploring with the career expos that we have out there in manufacturing and in health, and just trying to provide them with many opportunities as possible.
Also, Emerging Leaders specifically targets African-American students, and African-American students being recruited to college and then being retained through their, their choices that they make. So the Emerging Leaders Program is a kind of scaffolding around the students that sometimes may be high-risk, but also have potential for great success. And what we're trying to do through that program is be able to give them the right information at the right time. And then when they enter into college and take their classes, we're looking for a higher recruiting number, we're looking for then a higher retention rate, class to class. And those are measurables, and we can share those as well. This is the first full year for Emerging Leaders. And Dr. Ali runs that program through her office. Unfortunately, she was ill today, wasn't able to be here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item number six, once again, we would also like to say a special thank you to our Teachers' Union for your collaboration on this contract extension. I shared last Wednesday at the state of the schools that with all the uncertainty going on in our state, everyone wants to feel protected, everyone wants to know what the bottom line is. And so it offers the district an opportunity to look at and forecast as it relates to our budgets. But it also lets our teachers know, you know what, we value, you're important, and so that they know over the course of the next three years, two to three years, what their salary structures will look like. So thank you to the PFT for collaborating. We didn't always agree on the bottom line, but we arrived at an agreement that we could all live with, and that's what it's all about as it relates to negotiations. Questions on number six? Or comments? Seven is just the annual approval of the contracts as it relates to our back-to-schools all-staff meeting, and then our three graduation exercises, May 31, 2014. Item number eight, Lindbergh and Jamison are converting from targeted assistance. Targeted assistance means a certain group of students who are able to spend Title I monies on. By moving to school-wide, they can use the money for the entire school and for programming to support not only student achievement, but also professional development. And then number nine, all the school-wide plans for the remaining schools. Last year, we combined our Rising Star and our Title I plans, and then through the auditing process, they still wanted to see two separate plans. They wanted to see the Rising Star plan, and then also our Title I plans. So our goal next year is, just like we're trying, we're going to make sure choice is ready by August the 1st, we will in October submit the Title I plans for approval. But we're just making sure and cleaning up some just paperwork technicalities from our audit. And then item number 10 is the, any questions on eight or nine? Item number 10 is our adoption of the license agreement with Cannon Elite. As you recall, this, we went into the second year this year with Elite being at Treewind. Throughout the year, we discussed looking at cancellation of the Park District contract. What could District 150 do in-house? And then we renegotiated that contract, not only with Cannon Elite, but also looking at the staffing equation that makes it up. Questions as it relates to the adoption of the Elite contract?
I have a question in regards to exactly what this proposed action is. It's basically for the consultation fee, the licensing fee for the program. It doesn't cover all the other operational expenses to have the Elite program in District 150.
That's correct. It covers the license agreement and also the consulting agreement with Cannon Elite. And then there are additional expenses as it relates to the staff in order to run the program at the two schools.
So when we look at, again, overall, having this program in the community, because many were confused and questioned, you know, was this just a, was this a Park District program? Is it a District 150 program? Is it a Carr-Cannon program? And so it was a matter of trying to pull it apart to bring it all back together.
Correct.
And so we still have, in the total Elite program, the licensing and consultant fee to Mr. Cannon.
That's part of the $60,000.
That's part of the $60,000. And then we'll still have the operational expense for support staff.
That's correct.
And it will be at two schools now instead of one.
Yes, at Treewind, continuing into year three for Treewind, and then also this upcoming year for Harrison. Once again, the decision on the schools is based on the feeder patterns, so Treewind and Harrison both feed into Manual, and looking at that, also the proximity of the two schools, so that not only will each school have staff supporting the program, but they can also collaborate and work together.
And since there were questions about the overall cost of that program previously, Dr. Kenny, where will we be in the overall cost for this coming year with this?
Can I read a statement first before you do that? Thank you. Because of the decrease in general state aid funding, we are no longer able as a district to fund the staff for the Elite program. We are therefore choosing to continue our program at Treewind and start a program at Harrison using Title I funds. We will only use the education funds to pay for the annual license agreement. So I think that gets to where you were headed with, Dr. Kenny. So the $60,000 that you see here will be supported through Ed Fund. The schools will support the remaining of the program as it relates to the staff for, through Title I funds.
And that cost, Dr. Kenny, will be?
Okay. I don't have the exact personnel cost. I do believe that it will be just slightly higher than this past year, but keep in mind, that'll be spread over two schools.
Right.
And again, we'll be able to use some Title I funding to help with the program, so that saves the education fund dollars in a very big way. We budgeted about $400,000 this past year for the Elite program.
And so that's about what it will take though now for two schools?
Right.
It was at one school, now we're adding two schools for about the same cost.
So the 60 minus from the overall cost of the $400,000, the remainder of that will come from Title I funds?
Yes.
From the two schools. It will be dispersed between those two schools. Each school receives their own Title I allotment, and so that funding will come out of their Title I allotment.
Okay. Other questions on, we'll be at number 10. And then, let's see, 11 was just continuation of year two for Sadexo, and then we have the standard contract with Great Plains. And then I think from the building committees, 13 and 14 have been, and 15 are just a low bid as it relates to construction.
I'm just curious on the, on the construction. Were the bids favorable as we looked at when they came in? I mean, we always look at what we hope the bids are going to be. Did they, they come in about where we thought they were going to be? Were they a little lower? Were they a little higher?
The air conditioning was a little lower. The gym and the cafeteria additions were real close. So all three together are probably a little better than we thought.
No huge surprises then?
No, no, neither way. I, let me comment just a couple things real quick. People wonder, so what's this $27,000 about? Well, Peoria Metro was the low on Calvin Coolidge. They were also the low on Rolling Acres. So we're going to take advantage of their also willingness to give us $20,000, $7,000 discounts. So that's, that's good for us. What we did was we allowed the contractors to bid on one or the other, or both, and if they wanted to bid on both and give a special discount, that was fine. So it was very easy to judge, so, as you can see from bid tabs. The other thing I can comment, the, if you take out one outlier on the six contractors, I think the other five were just... I think the other five were just within just a couple percentage points of each other. So, that's usually a sign that decent bid specs.
Any other discussion questions?
Oh, yeah. Hold it, yeah.
Seeing none. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
Ms. Patel?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Cloyd?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Kastig?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion to adjourn.
That takes us to the items on tonight's deliberation. I know. But I got to read 16 again.
Yeah, but it's not part of the deliberation agenda, though.
Okay. All right. Item 16.
Item number 16 is a request for us to contract out to continue with the reevaluations or initial evaluations as it relates to special education students. So, let me just give you some totals this year, what we were able to accomplish during the school year, and then why we need to finish. Number one is, we completed 823 reevaluations, so looking at students to see if they need to, if they are eligible to continue with services for special education in the upcoming school year. We completed 276 initial evaluations, so when a recommendation comes up if a student is referred into special education. And so, now, the total number of reevals overdue is 115, and the total number of initials to be completed is 76. And so, we just need additional staff, outside staff, to help us throughout the summer to complete these evaluations. And that's the request for this contract. Yes?
First of all, am I correct? It's still state mandated that everyone within IEP, including speech-only, have to have a three, or a reeval every three years? And there is a deadline?
Yes.
As to how, they can't be seven, eight months past that three years. There is a deadline that the state comes in and looks for, correct?
Right. That's why we have that 115 overdue as it relates.
Right. So, those have to be done within a certain timeframe.
Right. Our goal is to start in August of 2013, start, stretch to be at zero. And so, that's why we're requesting the additional support. Because, once again, the overdue eval is not good for us as a district because of the fact that we could be fined for that later on. And we're trying to really clean up and focus on special education this year.
Dr. Lathan?
Mrs. Kastig?
Oh, Ms. Kastig.
I think that my, my question would be, is in reading through the supplemental information, this company is not in Illinois, is that correct? Or are these people coming?
They're local, I mean, they're, the company is not, but then they'll contract with local people.
Local, okay. So, it's not, they're not coming?
Right. Yes.
So, is there going to be, okay, is there additional, additional, is there additional amounts of money incurred as a result? Because it has in here about traveling and things.
In reference to the travel, as it relates to how it's laid out in the supplemental information?
We've had difficulty securing school psychologists. We've had one opening all year. This company is a company that is out of state, and they do try to contract with local psychologists that, where there wouldn't be as much travel involved. This just gives us the go-ahead to try to contract with a local psychologist. But, again, it's not a guarantee. This just gives us the go-ahead to start working with onward healthcare. We would like our own staff to complete these, but we, bottom line is, we have reduced staff over the past few years, and right now, we're trying to catch up. But I think, actually, over the past several years, we've had a history of being behind also, and we don't want to be behind.
Just a quick question. You mentioned that in the past, we have, have we put out this information on the bid process, or, I mean, how have we?
I, we have not requested the bid on it. We've never had to do this, but I don't believe we're required to unless it's over a certain amount.
No, but I'm saying if it's a process that we've been trying to get people locally, and I'm, I'm just trying to understand how this outside company is going to get local people that we couldn't?
And again, we may not be able to. This just opens, psychology, school psychologists are very hard to come by. And actually, I've only had like two applicants.
That's what I mean, advertised.
The vacancy has been advertised all year in reference to how have we tried to attract people.
Mr. Cloyd?
Just to clarify, the date says the proposed amount requested for approval will be approximately $21,000 for the end of this school year through June 30, 2013. Is it through 2013 or 2014?
Well, since we're grant funding this, and we actually have to get the amendment approved first, that was best-case scenario, that it gets approved, they have a candidate, and the person starts tomorrow, and that's not going to happen. So, right now, we, we enter into this agreement, and IDEA only runs through June 30th, so we make the amendment for this last part of the grant, and then the grant starts over July 1st. We have a significant amount of carryover dollars, so I, I'm not concerned about, I mean, that's why we have the IDEA funding. So, the additional cost after the $21,000 is the amount that'll start July 1st.
But you can't obligate it to the new year with funds. So, you have to use, and that's why it's June 30th.
So, it's split.
So, I guess the question is, do we have to reauthorize this after the 30th of June?
This agreement, I do not believe we'll need to reauthorize it because it's, it puts us through for a year. But we will absolutely keep you posted on, on the progress of this.
Okay. So, just to clarify, the funding is through June 30th, but the agreement is through the end of the next school year?
Right. And it's our intent to include it in next year's grant also, that we're writing now.
Thank you. That helps. Ms. Kastig?
And because of the fact that there is a mandated date in order to have the evaluations or reevaluations completed, in the event that this company cannot secure the professionals that are needed, do we have a Plan B?
We have a plan that's going to coexist with this. We're going to offer, we're in the process of communicating. I, we want to get all the data first, then we'll communicate with our psychologists and social works team, the team members, to see if they'd be willing to work. We can't make them work longer than the school year. We're going to let them come in while our coordinators are still here, the tail end of this year, and then the beginning of next school year, to come in to get some of this work done at their, you know, compensated rate. So, we'd like, we'd like to work together, but the, the bottom line is that we can't just say ignore crises or school problem solving and only focus on this. It's a, it has to be a delicate balance, really.
Just, just one other question, if I could. If, if there's another source available locally, are we obligated to continue working with these folks after June 30th?
No.
Okay. Thanks.
I just have one question. Are you going to hold out till you get this in place?
I'm hoping. We plan on next week, at least. I'm not concerned about that.
I am.
Linsky will be here.
Any other questions or comments on item 16?
Okay. May we have a vote on item 16? Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
Your motion.
Okay. Motion and a second to approve item 16.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
Ms. Patel?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Cloyd?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Kastig?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion to adjourn.
That takes us to the items on tonight's deliberation agenda. Ms. Kastig? Or who's?
Oh, okay.
Reverend Butler?
Yes. Deliberation agenda, item number 17, review of suspensions, the proposed action that the review of suspensions listed on the report dated May 13, 2013 be approved as amended.
Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
Ms. Patel?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Cloyd?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Kastig?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion to adjourn.
Item number 18, revocation of board probation, the proposed action that the revocation of board probation listed on the report dated May 13, 2013 be approved as presented.
Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Patel?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Cloyd?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Kastig?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford? Aye.
Item number 19, expulsions, the proposed action that the expulsions listed on the report dated May 13, 2013 be approved as presented.
Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Patel?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Cloyd?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Kastig?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion to adjourn.
It also reads, students expelled by the board are referred by number, therefore ensuring privacy. Board action concerning the students have been decided in executive session.
Thank you, Reverend Butler. Any presentations or suggestions by board members?
Excuse me. I have a question.
Ms. Jack?
I was asked to be here to get a review. I mean, I'm just saying, I have things to do.
Mr. Jackson?
I've got one question. I was just asked to be here to get a review.
Hold on, Mr. Jackson, you're out of order.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Please give your name and number to Kena. Right now, we're, the, the time for...
My question, you, this...
You can, you can come talk to us after the meeting. Right now, we're concluding the business of the board. That's all I can say.
Oh, okay. I didn't know.